Okay, I'd like to call to order the April 30th, 2024 Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan.
Present.
Member Reed.
Present.
Member Satterwhite.
Present.
All right, on tonight's agenda, we have three policies that we're going to look at. The maximum age for school admission and attendance policy, which is coded JEBA. The school dress code, which is coded JICA. And this policy on attendance, absences and excuses, which is coded JH. So it looks like we're going to get started with the maximum age for school admission and attendance policy, again coded JEBA. And with a presentation on that, we have Charlie Gallo, our compliance officer, excuse me, Tessie Mower, who is a vice principal at Classical, and Jennifer Shorter, who is our data administrator. So, welcome in, thank you.
Good evening. Just a few brief words to sort of frame our discussion today. Charlie Gallo, for the record, Lynn Public Schools Compliance Officer. Thank you for having us, Superintendent, members of the administration, Chairperson Dugan, and Subcommittee Members Satterwhite and Reed. So, the first policy that we'll discuss tonight is the maximum age for school admission and attendance policy, dress code, and then attendance, absences, and excuses. And I just want to give you a background and a general timeline of these. You may recall that on January 30th, I provided a general correspondence to this committee, letting you know that we were working on these things. In January and February, we started with initial working group meetings. We developed drafts, revised drafts. There was much research. There was opportunity for stakeholder input, and we'll go into detail on this with respect to each policy. But these are three major policies, and we came through them pretty quickly, thanks in part to caffeine. And secondly, a number of people that I want to recognize for their efforts. So Superintendent, and you'll forgive me for reciting, but Superintendent Alvarez, Deputy Superintendents Regiro Powers and Corris, Molly Cohen, who was at the time curriculum and during this process became deputy-elect, Patty Hebert, who was here, who was at the time principal of Druids and became Chief Academic Officer-elect, Bobby Bishop from DEI. Big thanks to the DAT and data team, Jennifer Shorter and Matt Cronin, the Compliance Department chaired these meetings, and with me Lauren Walsh, who was very involved in attendance in particular. MLE Department was represented through Amanda Campbell, Special Education through Dr. Kalella, Innovation through Shannon Gardner and Nicole Bolio, the Attendance Department, including Gianni Berg, Kristen Freyer, Christian Morales, SEL, that's Tina Hoofnagle, Erin Heaton, and Virginia Lee, our nurses, Deb Tanser and Jackie Western from the Welcome Center, Yvette Martinez, Mary Jewels was at everything as part of this. We had school representation, including Principal Mara Durgan Scully from FECTO, Jackie Fisher, who is a guidance counselor at Classical, Tessie Mower, who is here with me, vice principal at Classical, Nicole Passanisi, vice principal at English, Matt Wilkins, guidance counselor in English, Julie Luef, Breed Principal Heather Fabiano, who will join us later, who is principal of Frederick Douglass, Rarty Peña, Dr. Peña, principal of English, and one of his vice principals, Jen Mancinello, Classical Principal Amy Dunn, vice principal, one of the vice principals at Tech, Tim Moriarty. Through Bobby Bishop, we had student cabinet input and DEI consultant input. There was opportunity for teacher input through the superintendent's cabinets, as well as by emailing these proposed policies to the LTU on April 12th. And I want to thank also Chairperson Dugan, who dug in and continued to consult throughout this process, as well as Mr. Smith from the mayor's office, who is here and did the same. So thank you for letting me take a moment and recognize those names as we frame our discussion tonight, starting with maximum age of attendance. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, and I'll start with Ms. Mower.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here today and hearing us. My name's Tessie Mower. I'm one of the vice principals at Lynn Classical High School. I'm going to share with you the beginning of the process of how we went about looking at and determining what changes needed to be made to our maximum age for school admission and attendance. So there are two ideas here, and kind of walk you through the evolution of it, and then hand off to my colleague, Dr. Shorter, who will dive real kind of deep, I think, into the data and how we made some informed decisions. All right. So, before we go further, I just wanted to share that this, as Mr. Gallo stated, this group was a pretty extensive group, who met quite often. We reviewed past and current policies in Lynn Public Schools. We also looked at some of the local and not so local districts around us. So we went to, we looked at policies from Bedford, Framingham, Lawrence, Salem, to see what, over the years, has been their maximum age of admission and attendance. We use all that information, along with lots of Lynn Public Schools data, to make those, to see where it is that we have gaps, to see where it is that we need to make some adjustments. And we did lots of drafts, let's put it that way, revised more drafts. And so today, our hope is that we can present to you a draft of what we think is a great policy going forward for this, for the next coming school year '24, '25, and hopefully you can recommend that to the full committee. So, looking back, kind of a nod to 2019 and what we had as a policy in 2019. Forgive me, I have lots of papers here. This is the up-close version. Charlie gave me a nice, clean version, but I'm using my up-close version, just to make it easier to see. But in 2019, we had a maximum age for admission in Lynn Public Schools. And I'm going to read to you just what's circled there. It's important to note, because it states the age there, that the Lynn School Committee, however, requires that all persons admitted or readmitted to the Lynn Public Schools into a regular education program, or vocational education program, or any other non-special education program, shall not be 20 years of age of the day of admission, as of the day of admission. So that was, the magic number there was 20, okay? For the time, that seemed to be where we were, what worked. We looked to see at that time what was, what were other schools doing, other districts doing, and we looked at what Salem Public Schools had. And in that particular year, at the end of the school year, it said in their policy that the superintendent would review each student older than 18 for approval or denial of attendance for the ensuing school year. And it's interesting to note the word attendance, as opposed to admission. Some districts stuck to the word attendance, and that was what they focused on for maximum age. Our district at the time used admission, okay? So looking at general law, Massachusetts Law Title 12, Chapter 76, the language there actually establishes and uses the word attendance. So in 2022, we used state language, along with what we think would be, help us to close some loopholes. In 2022, we had this policy put together, approved by school committee, seemed to do a lot of the work that we needed for that time as well. And I'm going to read to you just a couple of the starred points. That's a lot, and obviously you can look at that at your time, at your leisure. But if you look at that first star, maximum admission age, key word is admission here, all persons admitted or readmitted to the Lynn Public Schools shall be under 20 years of age as of the day of admission, unless otherwise eligible for admission or readmission on the basis of applicable special education criteria, or upon approval by the superintendent. So again, that number is 20. Going further down to the next star, you see where it says regardless of age, no person may be admitted or readmitted to the Lynn Public Schools who has the following, one of the following three criteria. And those were added, again, to close some of the loopholes. It kind of gets specific about what prior education a student may have had. So the first bullet point is if a student had graduated already from the 12th grade of any public or private school in the U.S., or had they earned a GED, high set or similar alternative to graduation. Or, the third bullet point, they had already completed a reasonably equivalent secondary curriculum inside or outside of the United States, as based upon any documentation provided by the applicant to the Welcome Center. So a lot of this work would be closely tied between superintendent's office, the principal of the school, and the Welcome Center, to look at a transcript and see what equivalent education a student had. But again, the number there is 20 years old. And then the further down star point, maximum attendance age. So that was when we added the attendance language. And in that, it says unless admitted or readmitted to the Lynn Public Schools upon approval by the superintendent, as described above, no person may attend Lynn Public Schools if they attain the age of 20 years on or before August 31st, effective for the following school year. And to illustrate the example, a person who turns 20 on January 1st of '22, they may complete the '21-'22 school year. Such person may not, however, continue to attend the Lynn Public Schools as of September '22, or such earlier start. Going further. That's a lot of kind of the past. I just wanted to share where we were. We obviously have a need to make some changes and see where we're going. We have a little levity for you on the slide. Where's the beef? Some of you may know what that means. I, we don't know. Some people may not know what that means. If you've never seen that before, you could YouTube it. It'll give you a chuckle. But we need to see where the data, what does the data say? And so I'm going to hand it off to my colleague, Dr. Shorter.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tessie and Charlie have done a great job of painting the context of where the policy has been. And so I'm just going to kind of paint a quick picture of what has been the impact of those policies and the outcomes when we think about our students, but also from the perspective of when we think about our district as well. And so placing those, like, one in the same, but at the same time, the implications for us as a district, but also what our student outcomes look like. So what we did was we looked at the last five years of graduation data, from 2019 to 2023. And that was almost 5,000 students. Some students may have been left out due to lost data, not accurate data. And so just wanting to paint that picture, that this is close to 5,000 students who have graduated over the past five years. And so what we did was we disaggregated the data, broke the data down by, at what age did those students enroll in the district? And so on the left, going from bottom to top, you see that that is the percent, representing percent of students who graduated. Across the bottom, from left to right, what you see is the age in which the student enrolled in Lynn Public Schools. And so if you look, you see a pretty consistent orange line going across with some dips here and there. But I'm going to highlight one thing, that students who enter at the age of four and five, what you see in the green circle on the screen, tend to have the highest graduation rates, at approximately 91 and 90%. But for the sake of the policy, today, we're focusing where you see that red arrow going down. You'll notice that that is between 13 and 14, where you see that overall, pretty much precipitous drop in graduation rates. But if you look to the far right, our overall graduation rate for the past five years as a district is 82%. And so when I go back to that red line with the precipitous drop, is you see, it's an 81% graduation rate for students who enter at 13. But then it goes down to 69% for students who enter at 14. And then you hit another precipitous drop, I think you get the picture, particularly as students get older, when they enroll in the district, they have a less likelihood of graduating. And so when we think about how that impacts us as a district, as you probably remember or not, early on in the year, I presented about our accountability data. And part of that framework for how we're held accountable by DESI, and also funding structures as well, is those, number three, where it talks about high school completion. There's a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, there are five indicators, but again, just focused on our conversation today. Our high school completion, our four-year cohort graduation rate is impacted by this, our extended engagement rate, and our annual dropout rate, which gives us for a total of 12 points. And last year, we received four out of 12 possible points. And that's just one single year. And so we got about a third of those points, and thinking about connecting those dots of how that data impacts our overall ranking against other districts in the state. So what are the implications for the students? When you look at that data, again, just to reflect at a high level, students who began in LPS at the age of 17, had a 36% graduation rate compared to the overall district at 83%, around 83%. Students who began at 18 had a 28% graduation rate. And so currently, we have 136 ninth graders that are 17 or older, and there's some additional information about, you know, they're changing their age, they're getting older. And so again, just thinking about, what are the outcomes for these students, around the likelihood of them dropping out, but also the likelihood of them aging out as well?
I want to thank my colleagues very much for their great presentations, and I think we heard about how the proposed policy would both help students in terms of their education. We're not, we're proposing, as you'll see, a younger age, an earlier age, so that we're not accepting students so late that they're great likelihood of dropping out. This also will be, this proposal will also, because of that, help our accountability numbers. And the last thing I want to do is just connect the dots to some other things that are going on, or have been going on. In terms of backdrop for the proposed new policy, this connects to policy IKF, which you voted on, and I congratulate you for voting on, in February of 2024, where we changed the structure of graduation requirements. We pegged to mass common core, but we also, rather than saying you have to do 25 credits per year, every year, it's an overall credit number. So what that means is this provides a backdrop where we can create a pathway to start a student out of ninth grade, depending on their prior experience, or do other creative things to allow them to get those credits in a shorter time, will be better setting them up for success. And there are resources that will help us do that. This is, for example, Massachusetts doesn't have one, unfortunately, but Rhode Island has a resource about evaluating foreign transcripts. Member Reed, you and I talked about this topic. In addition to this, there will need to be some work done when we get into the pristine procedure stage around when a student whose overage comes to us to enroll, where do we direct them? So it'll be building community partners and alternative programs and things in the community, maybe not housed in the schools necessarily, but that will be part of procedure. And as you know, separating policy from procedure is a continuing theme that this committee has endeavored to accomplish, starting with your work with Dorothy Presser a few years back. So all that having been said, this is the proposed new policy JEBA, and we're happy to take any questions, and thank you for the time tonight on it.
Member Reed. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was great. I have talked to Attorney Gallo about some of these things, and it took me a little while to comprehend some of this stuff. So if I ask questions that are repetitive, I know you said it. I just wanted to clarify for anyone who's interested or watching. So, the current policy, when do you age out?
So, the current policy is an age out at 20. You're allowed to finish out that year.
Whatever year that is.
Correct.
Right. So, in the same vein, how are students currently placed into what grade level, in terms of, say, they're coming from another country, or something like that, or another district, anything?
Great question. So, Member Reed, you're doing a, you know, a great tieback to this policy IKF. So prior to this committee adopting that.
Yep.
It was more likely that those students would be placed in ninth grade.
Exactly.
So now these policies working together will better set them up, not for a dropout, and better, better set the district up, not to be, for lack of a better term, sort of penalized in terms of accountability numbers.
Right. Absolutely, yes. I think that was one of my big concerns, was, I think of a student, you know, if a student was a senior, and they came to this district for whatever circumstance, and they had the credits, and they were 18, or 17, I guess, and they were placed in that, I think there's a lot higher likelihood that they would finish, as opposed to someone who's 18 and placed in a freshman class, or vice versa. So I think that this policy, hopefully we can do some more work in evaluating transcripts or other things like that, to make sure that students are still be, able to be placed in the appropriate level, which may even help some of these rates even more so. I guess this is a more general question to the committee, and maybe, like Attorney Gallo said, to the city or elsewhere, is what, what can we do to help these students? That obviously, this path is probably not the best path for them, and they age out, I think is something that we have to think about. Someone's over 18, you know, their alternative programs, or, you know, just something to think about, either now or moving forward. So that's all I got for this policy, but thank you.
I'll, Member Reed, I'll take that question. I just want to, Dr. Shorter did a great presentation in terms of the numbers and the data that she shared about the graduation rates, and, you know, having an understanding of by age, more or less, what happens. When we're, when we've registered the data on students that are 18-plus, they're graduating between 27 and 36%, right? That's the average graduation rate, which is extremely low compared to the district average at 82. So, currently, and last year, this was also the case, because we reviewed this last spring, late spring, and we've looked at it again several times this year. We have about 322 students between Classical and English that are overage and undercredited. And so what that means is that they probably, most of them have entered, right, at a later age, and it becomes very difficult for them to, because there are no real waivers or any kind of forgiveness in terms of the courses that they can't prove that they've taken, to your point. Collaborating with foreign countries in terms of, you know, verifying graduations or transcripts, other states have been doing that for quite some time. So the translators have been, you know, doing that work for several months now, just to do some verification around, because in most cases, students that are either coming from Europe, or Central, or South America, when they're 17, they have graduated high school. That's just, that's how their educational system works. And so we wanted to be sure in verifying whether or not a student already had a high school diploma, before we enrolled a student in our traditional high school. So those 322 students, what we, what we think is, again, it's not about a student who's a senior and is 18 or about to turn 19, right? Because that means you're on track for graduation. We're talking specifically about students that come to our district at 19 to enroll, and then are placed in ninth grade. And that's the group that we're talking about when we say 322 students between the two traditional high schools. There are some options in the community with pathways, but not enough to offer classes for ESOL, you know, at the very basic levels of learning English, and/or enough seats in programs to take the GED in Spanish, for example. So I think that we, we need to come together as community members to figure that piece out. One idea that we have sort of brainstormed on is, you know, is, would it be possible to bring it to the committee of the whole, to talk about the Lynn Enrichment Community Program, and what they're currently offering, and how maybe we can extend some of these courses into that program? But other than that, we would need, you know, support from community members and you as school committee members to help us figure out where we could best direct these students, right? Because we, we don't want them to feel displaced, but at the same time, we know from the data that they are not completing, they're not graduating, and the overcrowding situation in our high schools is, at this point, is making the environments, right, where, where our students are sitting, now we're, we're just, we continue, you know, we're continuing to add. And our trend, based on the towns and cities around us, is very different in terms of enrollment. We, enrollment continues to go down in districts around us, and our enrollment continues to go up. And so that is also a concern, right, for the upcoming years, in terms of, we physically do not have seats at this point. And we have nowhere to expand. So those are all things that I just wanted to comment on, to your point.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. One, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
One more quick question. For this data chart, does this assume that all these kids enter in grade nine, or is it controlled for that?
The chart is based on the actual age, and so you may have some 14 or 15-year-olds in the same grade, so it's not necessarily grade-based.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But based on the age when they enroll.
Right, right. I got you, I got you. And, yeah, I don't understand the where's the beef comment either, so I might be in the lower half of that, so.
So just to, just to add, just to add, the academics team has, you know, really also been working on, like, if, if this is something in the direction that we're going through, and the committee of the whole passes it, thinking about, you know, a sample of, you know, where should a 14, 15, and 16-year-old be placed? Where should a 17-year-old be placed? Where should it, so that when we have students that, for whatever reason, come at 16 or 17, again, placing them in ninth grade is detrimental. We're really thinking more about age placing, and then recovering the classes that they need, in a different way versus placing them with 14-year-olds, right, in a freshman class. It's, we've, the data's telling us that that is not working for our students. So with the curriculum team really thinking about, how do we make those changes and have general guidance for the high schools to all practice, right, the same placement, just requirements for, based on age and credits, or the lack thereof of credits? I think that will make a significant difference, right, in how the grade, the grades look.
Member Gailey.
Earlier this year, I, either this year or last year, I did get calls from some people that their students were going into English high school, or into, I don't even recall if it was Classical, but it was English, and they were coming in, and they were a junior in their country, but they were placed in ninth grade. And then I just made the phone call, and they put them where they belonged. Is that not happening anymore?
So I think that the, the purpose of having the academics team develop that coherence across the practices, right, with our guidance counselors and placement at the high schools, will eliminate that. I can't say for sure. I think different things were happening at the two, the two traditional high schools, right? I think in Atlantech and FTCA, you have, it was more controlled because you have a different, like, entry process. But with Classical and English, there, it seems that there wasn't a consistent process, right, or a similar student experience when you arrived and were registered.
Yeah, because they would just be put in the ninth grade.
Attorney Gallo.
If I could, and I'm glad, because I neglected to mention something, Member Gailey, for that question as well, and to the superintendent's point, this separating of policy and procedure is important. And so there's a parenthetical with all of these about a proposed effective date of next year, September. And so the idea would be that these, these procedures that accompany this policy, if this were to be adopted by the school committee, these procedures that Dr. Alvarez is talking about, could be developed in the summer for next year. So that's sort of the order of operations, proposed.
That's what's missing, is our procedures.
I make a motion to send this policy to the committee of the whole.
Second?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Member Dugan.
Yes.
Member Reed.
Yes.
Member Satterwhite.
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I think this is going to be a good one for the full committee on May 9th. All right. Next up is dress code.
Thank you.
Dress code, which is coded JICA. And presenting on this will be, again, our compliance officer, Charlie Gallo, our DEI officer, Bobby Bishop, Heather Fabiano, who is the Frederick Douglass principal, and I didn't see Jen here, but it says Jennifer Mancinello, English Vice Principal, but yeah, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so Ms. Mancinello is, was unable to join us last minute, but we're going to start with Heather Fabiano, and so I'll give the microphone to my colleague and ask.
You trust me?
I do, yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Heather Fabiano. I'm the principal at the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy, and I'm just going to take you, excuse me, through the process of what we did as a committee. you, excuse me, through the process of what we did as a committee to talk about the student dress code based on what we currently have, where we've come from, and what we've seen in other districts. So similar to what happened with the age of attendance, we looked at several different communities that were similar to ours or surrounding us, and because I'm a slight overachiever, I added a few extras that weren't on the attendance one because of just the connections that I know that are similar to kind of the district we have here. So we looked at a very large population, and then we chose Seattle because I believe it's progressive was the word, just to see kind of what they're doing out there with their dress code. A lot of them were similar to each other. Some of them, a lot of the districts such as Lawrence and Springfield had several different ones depending on the schools, but a lot of them were also very deep into uniforms. So we also talked about that. And then after the discussion about what the other districts were kind of doing, what our district currently has, we created a draft, and then the draft went to a subcommittee that was Mr. Gallo, Mrs. Mancinello, and myself, and we kind of went over the proposed changes, kind of wrote it up, and then brought it back to the committee to kind of see it again. Mr. Bishop did bring it to the superintendent's student cabinet, and they were able to view it and give some feedback on what their thoughts on dress code were, period. And then they sent it to the superintendent's teacher cabinet to view, and then it was also shared with the L T U if they wanted to view it and give anything back.
Similar to what we did with max age, just briefly, this is the dress code in 2012, and there were some changes to it a couple of years ago, and they focused on sort of socioeconomics, making sure that we weren't targeting or being perceived as targeting on the basis of items that were more likely to be worn by a given race or ethnicity, worn by, more likely to be worn by a given sex or gender. And so we took those things out of the policy, and in 2021, the committee voted to update the dress code, and the dress code you have before you looks similar to this dress code. And we're gonna get into what the feedback has been since 2021, and also there were some amendments voted in in 2022. And so those feedbacks have been, you know, generally that we're moving in the right direction, but we do need some more clarity in terms of families being able to understand standards in the policy, and school administrators being able to uphold those standards and enforce those standards in those schools. Why are we here also just two years later? Another reason is that fashion evolves quickly. Dress code is a policy that should be looked at probably more often than other policies. And additionally, there's an increased focus, and should be an increased focus, on student safety and staff safety within our schools. Code is always a compromise, and I always say this, nobody agrees 100% on the dress code ever, and that includes those of us in the working group, but I will tell you that there were consensus themes that did develop. One of them, and the most important one, is safety. I want to give credit to Dr. Pena, who thought up, you know, having as part of the dress code, a visible ID badge. Prohibition on gang attire, prohibition on criminal violence and hate imagery, were items that were included in 2021 and 2022, and you'll see again today. We did data-informed decision-making, again, Deputy Superintendent Regiro and I have had the pleasure of doing dress code together for a few years now, and to Deb's credit, this time around, you know, said, should we be banning flip-flops? Other districts banned flip-flops. We looked at the data. There were three shoe-related nurse visits in the district last year. There's no reason to ban flip-flops, or to ban crocs, or anything like that. So we're making data-informed decisions. Reasonableness in terms of style trends. There is a length requirement, which is a reasonable length requirement, three inches above the knee. There are provisions around the allowability of rips and terrors, as long as you're not exposing areas you shouldn't be. We start with the positive, each student must wear. We provide clarity for families, students, and schools, and we be sure to respect certain legal parameters, including DEI and social-emotional considerations. Those were the themes that developed in our group as we built this consensus, and I want to turn over to introduce himself and take us through those parameters, my colleague, Bobby Bishop.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Bobby Bishop, DEI. Regarding legal parameters, Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Sections 82 and 83, says, "The rights of students to freedom of expression in the public schools of the Commonwealth shall not be abridged, provided that such rights shall not cause any disruption or disorder within the school. School officials shall not abridge the rights of students as to personal dress and appearance, except if such officials determine that such personal dress and appearance violate reasonable standards of health, safety, and cleanliness." So regarding a student's rights, it goes on to say in Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 1D, and this also pertains to the Crown Act of 2022 that Governor Baker signed into law in July of '22. "A school district shall not adopt or implement a policy or code that impairs or prohibits a hairstyle that is historically associated with race. Protective hairstyles shall include but not be limited to braids, locks, twists, bandu knots, hair coverings, and other formations." An example that we, as in other components here, we looked at other examples in other districts as far as what did their policy look like. Worcester's example was very comprehensive regarding hair coverings such as scarves, durags, hair wraps, cultural and religious headwear are permissible as long as they don't obstruct the view of the face, unless for medical or religious reasons. Hats and bedandas are not permissible unless for medical reasons. So what was really important in reviewing particularly the Crown Act was to ensure that there wasn't any discriminatory practice or suggestion in forming this policy regarding ethnicity and race and hair coverings that come with that, protective hairstyles that come with that.
So this is the proposed policy that is before you. There are a couple of highlights, these were late suggestions, that came through student cab, excuse me, teacher cabinet meetings that were held this week. Just clarifications, the language around exceptions for head coverings, and sort of around exclusionary practices that I would say don't significantly change the draft that you received a few days prior, but just a couple of friendly amendments that we would suggest that the committee may consider. And again, this would be effective for September 2024, would be the proposal, and that from now till then, there would be quite a lot of procedure to be done. Mr. Bishop, who we work together quite a lot, and this would be one area that we'd be, of course, focusing on.
Absolutely.
So we're happy to answer any questions, all that being said.
Member Reed.
Thanks again for the second presentation. What is an example of something that would be SEL, I guess, I don't really understand that question. So, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So for example, in some circumstances, there could be students that have, previously have a diagnosis, and when it comes down to, when it comes down to circumstances that may exacerbate whatever might be going on any given day, there could be a situation where a student enters school that day and they're triggered. With that could come a self-consciousness regarding their appearance, and because of that, they're immediately emotionally disrupted. To have a consultation with the counselor, you know, with the clinician in order to kind of evaluate what's going on, it could directly be linked to feeling self-conscious and needing to cover themselves up. So as far as in policy, you could go on pages and pages regarding circumstances that could arise, so there's some discernment here regarding consultation with school clinicians and other staff members regarding what might be going on any given day.
Great, great, thank you. And then I think this is probably a legal question, Attorney Gallo, but how is it determined, for example, something that's, I guess, seems pretty subjective to me, but like, something like gang attire? How is that determined, I guess, both at the district level and then school-by-school basis?
Correct. So procedure-wise, we'll develop guidances for schools, but that's a great question. And at the bottom of the policy, number five, if interpretation of any provision above is needed for a question of attire related to a given student, principal or designee is going to determine it, because that's gonna be an on-the-spot.
Right.
But I will say that we looked at a lot of policies on this topic, and so I want to focus on 2B, for example. This includes pattern that may be indicative of gang affiliation, groups wearing identical beads, chains, earrings, bracelets, or other accessories, because it's no longer just colors. And so, you know, another thing is probably leaning on our partners at the LIN Police Department and sort of gang unit there, and helping us to understand what things are through presentations or literature that would help the principal to make that determination.
Awesome, appreciate it. No, I know it's kind of a gray, it can get tricky, so I just want to make sure.
If I may, LaSova and Roca have been great about assisting us in this area. As Attorney Gallo said, it's constantly evolving, right? And there is, you are running the risk of marginalizing students who may not have any intention of participating in that kind of activity, but are being targeted because of something that they're wearing. So staying on top of the evolution of what's happening and discerning if it's indicative of an affiliation or not is gonna be, again, a case-by-case situation.
And then I just want to add that during these working groups, there was a lot of discussion around common understanding, and what would we, how would we get there, and about professional development at the beginning of the year with the assistance of, you know, John Mackin and the Police Department, or just in general, so that we're all in an understanding of what the dress code is saying, and what is it that we're looking at.
Yeah, that was actually my next point I was gonna make, is I've gotten a couple, or a few calls or emails about sort of, some teachers feel there's a lack of enforcement, but I think, at least from my perspective, I think a lot of it was this, the old policy seems a little too broad and hard to understand, so I hope that this helps with some of the clarification of that, and I certainly think it does, and yeah, but that's all I got. Thank you, thank you.
Member Gailey, and then Member Sadaway.
I was just wondering if this summer you're gonna be writing procedures on this?
Correct. So same game plan, really, for all of these, which is that if this committee were to pass it on May 9, the full committee were to pass it for effective September 2024, we would be doing procedures over the summer.
Because that's what I was hearing from some of the staff, that they, there's no procedure, like, this is the policy, how do we? So maybe that's why they're not able to enforce it the way that we need to enforce it.
I would agree.
So that's what I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
And it would be added to our staff handbook.
Yeah, that's the feedback we got from the teacher cabinets as well, that, listen, procedure has to be next, so we have some guidance here.
That's what I'm hearing.
You know, there were, when, through Mayor Nicholson first, when he was in your seat, Chairperson Dugan, and then you continuing and seeing it through to the finish, you started out with over 400 policies in your handbook. You've now whittled it down to 274, and I venture to believe that three-quarters of those don't change much from district to district, but these few that you have tonight are the ones that we need some advanced work so we can do that procedure. And that's what we learned through that exercise that started, I think, in about 2019.
Member Sadaway.
Thank you for your presentation. Mine actually kind of touched upon what Member Gailey said. I was wondering if there was a procedure in place following the dress code as well in regards to violation, because I have received some complaints also from staff, and they, we can revamp the student dress code all we want, but if it's not being, you know, reinforced or all across the board, it's really not gonna do much. So I definitely think the policies, the procedures kind of come hand in hand with that one, at least.
And can I just add also, when I talked about the PD for staff, there's also the need for meeting with students, right? The opening of school, having assemblies, talking about what the dress code is, what, you know, what is expected, so that they also understand what is okay to wear and what's not.
Member Gailey, yes.
I just want to piggyback on that, like, could we have examples of what is acceptable to wear and what isn't acceptable to wear?
We talked about, well, yesterday, we had the elementary teacher cabinet. The secondary teachers, you know, obviously deal with some different situations, and to that point, one of the things that I reiterated to them was that they shouldn't be in those situations, right? They are there to teach and not be policing what students are wearing, and shouldn't have to be involved in that. But with the elementary teachers yesterday, some of them expressed concern around even students that are in fourth and fifth grade with some of the clothing and the attire, and, you know, how to manage that, how to discuss that with parents for us to help them model it. We talked about possibly doing, there are always modules that Charlie puts together at the beginning of the year for a number of topics, and we could possibly do that, not just for new teachers, but for all teachers to view and have, you know, the same language when they're communicating with parents around inappropriate clothing. And then, you know, a suggestion too around having videos at the different grade levels where, instead of telling students and not, I mean, we obviously need to do orientations and have discussions, but also showing them, like, what this is appropriate, this is not appropriate, right? And it could be, I mean, it could range all the way to something that is actually entertaining, and, you know, that they won't forget. And it just made sense, and they did agree with that, so we were thinking about having that maybe like for an elementary group viewing, and then one for, at the secondary level, because it would be, it would be great for them to see it. And again, we could even, you know, put some humor into that, so.
You could even make posters.
Well, when you think about it, students just really need to understand that we're not saying that you can't wear what you want to wear, but there is a place for what you want to wear, right? And so like, I think about a bathing suit, right? We all wear bathing suits. I would never wear a bathing suit to work, right? So, but at the beach, absolutely, right? So it's about helping kids understand that we're not saying you can't wear what you like and what you want, it's where is it appropriate to wear what you like and what you want.
Get some ready for work.
Can I just add also that during these discussions, Deputy Gores brought up a really great point with the secondaries about informing the students about, like, their investment in themselves, and understanding that when you dress this way, this is like the financial benefit you're gonna get, because you're understanding that when you go to your workplace, like, this is what is kind of being looked for, rather than saying, like, you can't wear this here, starting to show them, like, this is why you should represent yourself so that you're building your equity in yourself through your dress by showing, you know, who you want to present yourself as. And so that was something that we were looking into, like, managing. If we were gonna do videos, we could coin that for the secondary level.
Thank you.
My vote would be that you're in one of the videos, Member Gailey. Want you in one of the videos, come on.
Not to wear.
I make a motion.
Not to wear.
But not to wear. I was trying to be good.
We could have a video of school committee members.
It would be kind of funny for us. It really would be. We are creating the policy.
We're gonna, we can't wait to see John and his shots.
I'll abstain. I'll do it. I make a motion to move this policy to the committee of the whole.
Second?
All right, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Looking for that, watch for the video.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, and next up is our policy on attendance, absences, and excuses, and again, it's coded J H, and presenting is, again, Attorney Gallo, his Assistant Director of Compliance, Lauren Walsh.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Dugan. So this is the attendance, absences, and excuses policy. As you mentioned, Lauren, in addition to being Assistant Director of Compliance, comes to us as the district's, one of the district's prior supervisors of attendance, and so has done a lot of work, and I know that the two of you have talked on this issue. So I'm gonna turn it over to Lauren to introduce herself and take us through the first portion.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Walsh. I'm the Assistant Director of Compliance, and as Charlie said, I was previously the supervisor of attendance for about half the district. So I'm gonna walk you through the process, much like in the previous two presentations. We put a working group together that reviewed the existing LPS policy with D-minus language, reviewed relevant data, we'll do more on that later, and also reviewed other districts in mask, also more to come there. We then moved on to the drafting phase where we considered the legal parameters and DESI guidance. The policy was provided to the student cabinet for feedback, DEI for consultation, to the superintendent's teacher cabinet for teacher feedback, and finally was shared with the L T U, much like with the other two situations, or the other two policies before you tonight. So an overview of the previous policy, which Um, so, an overview of the previous policy, which is pretty lengthy, um, outlined essentially excused versus unexcused absences, but really took it a step further in talking about documented absences that are justified, documented absences that are not justified, and then, um, undocumented absences which are not justified. Um, so some things that would be considered documented and justified are things like doctor's notes if there was a death in the family, a parent note twice in a quarter, et cetera. Um, it's important to note the unjustified absences because that's really where at the secondary level that D-minus policy came into effect. Um, and so, these, um, sorry, so the grades, basically, if you had four or more undocumented unjustified or documented unjustified absences in a given quarter at the secondary level, you would automatically receive a D-minus, um, for the classes, um, that you were enrolled in. And so, you were able to recover those if you did not accumulate four or more absences the following quarter, but obviously first, fourth quarter for full-year courses and then second quarter for half-year courses, you weren't able to recover any grade at all. So, the D-minus stuck with you, basically. Um, and so, this was a really novel approach. I think that the intent behind this D-minus policy was really rooted in wanting to incentivize kids to come to school, but what it ended up doing was disincentivizing them and making it more difficult for them, um, to, you know, get, gather those grades back and to want to come to school if they're automatically getting the D-minus anyway. Um, other major districts like Boston had a similar policy as well.
Thank you. So, I think I showed my age earlier with Where's the Beef and, uh, Where's Waldo?
I understand that one.
You got that one?
I understand that one.
Thank you, thank you.
Kids hip on that one.
Yeah. So, um, so as, as Lauren said, you know, that, that the D-minus, uh, policy was a novel approach, um, it was something we had to try to, to know if it worked, and now we have data. We didn't have data at that time because we weren't trying it. So, the data shows, um, that it really hasn't closed the gap between the disparity historically, this is public DESI data, of statewide average attendance and LPS average attendance. There was a very slight improvement that first year, but very slight, a couple of points. Um, we're, we're now higher than, than, you know, sort of ever, um, post-COVID, as are all other districts really in the state, as you can see by this chart. But that, the data shows here that, that there was no narrowing of that gap. This, uh, year, uh, began, uh, with more fidelity, began the, um, period marking, you know, and, and also the, the D-minus grading by course based on period attendance, not just homeroom attendance. And, and so, when we look at that first marking period, we see that the grade most recent, most often changed to a D-minus as an A. Most often, the most frequency, uh, is the turning of an A to a D-minus in that period. We also see a disproportionality in terms of ethnicity of students who are affected. Seventy-two percent of students in the district are coded as Hispanic, however, those are, represent seventy-eight percent of the D-minus. And so, I'll give you the raw numbers as well. This is from that first marking period where we started with fidelity doing, uh, implementation of that D-minus policy. You can see eleven-hundred-sixty-seven students received a D-minus. Um, you can see that less than half of them recovered the D-minus, only forty-seven percent recovered the D-minus. And there are some other statistics on here as well. Uh, so all this is to say that now that we have the data, uh, we would consider revising the, um, the policy, uh, based on that data and based on a very strong review of the other districts. And I want to turn it back to my colleague, um, for that review.
Yes. And so, in, as with the other two policies before you tonight, um, we did a pretty extensive look at other districts, um, not only neighboring, but just a sort of a smattering across Massachusetts. Um, there were two, what we did was we looked at those thirteen districts. Two of them, Lawrence and Wallfam, did like a no credit or an incomplete as part of their policy. Um, Boston and Gloucester had both previously had, um, a grade sort of connection, much like ours, where if you were absent too many times, your grade was impacted. Um, interestingly, both Boston and Gloucester have removed that from their current policies. They no longer have that tied to grades that way. Um, and with regard to Gloucester, they actually had Attendance Works come in. Attendance Works is like the federal, um, research about attendance, chronic absenteeism. Um, they put out a lot of good information about how to get kids into school and, and best practices. And so, they came in and they looked at Gloucesters, and, and they basically said, this tie to grades does not get kids in the building, it's not the best practice anymore. And so, um, that's what sort of prompted Gloucester to change. Um, nine of the districts encourage that daily and on-time attendance with no disincentivization with like a D-minus N or I provision. Mask also does not recommend, um, any of those provisions. The majority of the districts do, do differentiate between excused and unexcused absences, um, and begin with a statement about the importance of regular and punctual attendance, um, and then by law, they also include the student absence notifications and dropout prevention. So, this is a, another situation, I think, much like the dress code, where themes emerged, um, with regard to attendance, um, and what we wanted to see be in a future, in, in this draft of the policy. And so, some, some of the themes that emerged were having very, very limited reasons for excused absences, um, making the language more clear, like I talked about, our current policy is, um, undoc, unjustified, undocumented, unjustified, documented, documented, justified. It makes it really confusing, um, for families to understand, and so we wanted to clarify some of that language, and also make it easy for administration to be able to do those procedures that best set up students for good attendance. Um, we separated, much like in every other presentations, separating the policy from that procedure, um, and, and the theme really was that, that the committee or the, the group did not want an NI or D-minus policy, or included in the policy. Here is that draft policy for your review, and we can take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. So, I'm just curious, um, back in the day, way back in the day, I don't want to put a cartoon about how long ago it was. However, um, if, if a student was absent from my class, I would allow them to make up their work. Or not, if they chose not to make up their work, then they wouldn't get the grade from the work that they missed. Would that be a logical solution to this problem?
So, I think that the, um, right, so, because, because when you were teaching and, and doing that, you saw that, that that was not, uh, a way to sort of incentivize or disincentivize the absence. So, so I think along the same vein and that way of thinking, this proposed policy now does not include the D-minus, I, or N policies, so, so that the student could actually maybe make up work and earn a grade. And I think it's important to distinguish the difference between a student who receives a D-minus and who earned a D-minus.
Exactly.
And this policy does that. The existing policy, I would submit, does not.
Okay.
Member Reed, yes?
Um, first question, when, when do we move from, um, the daily attendance versus the period attendance? Because my understanding, I, when I first came in, my understanding was that it was a daily attendance.
I think it, it did move that way at some point over the past few years, but I think this year, there's been a real fidelity and focus.
Period.
On calibrating that.
Yeah.
But over time, but.
Yeah, so, um, that's a great question, because I remember Member Dugan calling us at the, at some point early in the fall, uh, when, after the first quarter, we had, um, the DAT team, Dr. Shorter share with us a number of students and like the double counts, right? We were, I think at that time, up to around fourteen-hundred D-minuses approximately. And so, when we started this, this past school year in the fall, um, Deputy Powers and the attendance team, like, really, you know, we worked with the principals to make sure that all teachers, uh, were taking period by period attendance. And the reason for that is that in, whenever you have blocks, if a student is missing from that block, um, obviously for safety reasons, there's a, you know, a necess, there's an urgent need to report that, but we're also legally liable for students that are not in our classes and are reported present. And so, when that started happening, those numbers jumped, um, you know, it was, it was, uh, the, the jump was, was pretty drastic. And of course, you know, we all, when we all had questions about it, we started digging through that data, and that's what the, um, DAT team is. I think it's also, uh, important just to bring up that, you know, our, our accountability data includes chronically absent students. Like, there's a, there's a metric, there are metrics for that, um, which are shared in the, in, in part of the PowerPoint, but that has great impact, right, on that entire, like, how we're, uh, assessed as a district and what our ranking is, um, in terms of, so, when they're looking at all of the different priority areas, uh, the chronic absenteeism is, is definitely one where, um, we could improve, right, uh, how, how we're being measured against other districts.
Dr. Alvarez, can I add to that? I just want to give a little historical understanding as well. Um, those of you who have been on the committee for a while, uh, might remember that back when Dr. Tatwiler was here, we, we actually used to be not a D-minus, it used to be an F. And it wasn't four, it was seven. And so, the policy was changed when Dr. Tatwiler was here, and it actually was recommended, not recommended, it was told, because I was the deputy who told them. Um, we went from daily attendance, which would happen in homeroom, to period attendance. But to all of our points with these policies about the inconsistency in practice, because we didn't have procedures written out, we didn't have a staff handbook that everyone had a place to go to, to see it, so that everyone saw the same thing, which we are changing. Um, it wasn't consistent. And so, this year, we made it very clear that it was period attendance, uh, for all the reasons that Dr. Alvarez just shared. Um, and going forward, there will be a procedure, it will be part of the handbook, and so that everyone is in clear understanding.
Um, this is a data question, I don't know if either you know the answer to this, but for those districts, I think it was Boston that moved, or Gloucester that moved away from this to the other model, is, I don't know if there's been enough time that's passed yet, but has there been any change in the, uh, in the attendance at all, do we know?
I don't know. I know Gloucester just did it last year, so I'm not sure that there would be enough data to know.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, back to the state accountability thing, again, kind of like I talked about last weekend, it's, it's kind of foolish that, you know, districts like Lynn are being judged on the same basis as, uh, you know, other districts, just had to get that out, but thank you.
Member Sadowite?
Um, so, thank you for your presentation. I'm, I'm definitely in favor of the, the new removal of this, uh, D-minus policy. Um, I have a quick, just a thing I wanted to mention in regards to the student absences and excuses, uh, policy. I was wondering if there was any way that we could implement mental health days?
Yeah. So, so I think the propos, that proposal, um, has been proposed in, in the legislature a couple of times and, and hasn't passed yet. And so, the difficulty with, with us doing that before the legislature is that we would give, it'd be like, and I've seen the proposal that's come out of Marshall Middle School, for example, uh, the students there, I think, put together a proposal which says basically, um, the, the students would be given X number of mental health days, almost, almost like a staff member is given X number of personal days. And so, by giving that, we would be setting us, ourselves up, uh, absent a state law that relieves us of accountability for those days to sort of, the use of those days would result in lower accountability numbers. And so, I understand where they're coming from, those, those students who are advocating for this, but I would say that in the existing, or not existing, in the proposed policy, uh, we still allow for excused absences. And so, if there was a reason for an excused absence, a doctor's note or something could excuse them without sort of going down that road, so I think it accomplishes the same thing. And it also, um, my colleague Lauren could, could talk a little bit as well, that, that DESI really doesn't distinguish between excused and unexcused, nor does every district, just to give some context of why the recommendation before you is as it is.
Yes, and I will say on top of that, the DESI accountability does not take excused versus unexcused, it's just the number of days out. The reason for that is the, the research in, in Attendance Works really shows that it doesn't matter why a student is out, it's missed learning opportunity during that school day. And so, whether it's for mental health or whether it's for some other medical reason, it impacts their education just the same and makes it more difficult for them to learn, to get back into class, to, you know, get back into the regular routine of the day-to-day education. And so, Attendance Works has really, they actually advocate, much like Gloucester, that you don't even distinguish between excused and unexcused. So, we're sort of in the middle ground there between what Attendance Works is saying and, and sort of what we've done historically.
And I would also, you know, say, um, sort of stepping back from the policy too, that, that Lynn has, has done really, um, great things in terms of its SEL department and expanding the, um, services, options, um, supports, interventions that exist in school through the hiring of significant number of clinicians, school social workers, and so that, that, um, you know, that, that excusing someone in terms of mental health, it, it may assume from the state level legislators who are, are proposing that, that maybe those supports don't exist, and I'm proud that in Lynn they do, um, which may not be the case everywhere, that we have that ratio. I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty or so to, to one, something like that, um, so.
Uh, make a motion to move this policy to the committee of the whole.
Second, and roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, seeing nothing else on the agenda for tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, and roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Okay, meaning adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Attorney Gallo, thank you, as always, yes.
Thank you.